I am helping to run this meeting in his absence. We are going to skip a little bit out of order this evening so that teachers and etcetera can go home to their families. So I'm gonna ask Nadine to suggest what we should do first.
Correct, okay. I would like us to just go to business item C, the overnight field trip approval for nature's classroom. We have Laura Settle here, our sixth grade teacher. So Laura, if you just wanna come forward and just give the recommendation to the school committee?
Hi, my name is Laura Settle, I teach sixth grade science. And I'm here to present our annual trip to nature's classroom with your beautiful school. This year, we're hoping to go to Ocean Park, Maine for three nights and four days. We'll be departing on June 9th at 8:00 AM here at the school and return on Friday, June 12th at 2:30. We've already booked two buses with first student. We held a parent night on October 27th. We've set up a payment plan for parents. So far, all four of the core teachers are going to be chaperones and additional chaperones will be determined once we figure out if everybody's coming and how many girls and boys there are on the different floors of the building. So we'll be most likely asking some parents to chaperone for the trip. Right now, we're assuming that all sixth grade students are going. If any families feel they need assistance in a payment, we can find money for them. I think the student council last year offered any assistance they could not give. The trip cost right now is $3.75 per student. Again, that's based on how many actually attend. Last year, we weren't sure how the trip would look at the end of the year because historically it was always the beginning of the year to enroll more student students together because they didn't know each other. But it did a lot of team building throughout the year and it was just a fabulous way to end the year. You were like just a close community. It was very little drama. Everybody was, everybody got along and it just brought us together as a, as team six. So it was really, really great. The kids raved about it. I was just talking to a seventh grader today in the hall. She's like, "I would go five times in a row, I love it so much." So the kids just, they love it and it's been going on for over twenty years now. And everything that they do is aligned to our curriculum. You can tailor it to anything you want. There's a list of endless activities, hands-on, they do dissection, they go on nature hikes, they build things, they work with team building. So it's really a fabulous trip as maybe you already know. Any questions?
Hopefully, all the sixth graders will go because it's such a phenomenal experience?
Yes.
But if a child does not go, what does that child do while the rest of the class is away?
They still have to come to school and there's, there's work left for them to do. So we really encourage them to come along. And we work with, you know, a lot of them get, they get nervous, sometimes it's their first time being away and they don't allow any cell phones and, but we really work with them and we, we, we offer them, they make a list of, I think, their top five people that they feel comfortable rooming with because it's really nighttime where it starts to get, they start to get, you know, anxious. But they're usually with at least one or two of their close friends at night, so that really helps. And it's just a fabulous experience, so we'll hope that everybody will go.
Any other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the sixth grade nature's classroom overnight field trip?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next, I'd like to ask that we bring Irene Berry up to talk about her overnight field trip to Quebec City.
Hi. I know that the members of the school committee received the electronic agenda, not the agenda, the itinerary. I have hard copies if anybody would like one.
Okay, thank you.
We can put them actually, Irene, out by the agendas as people come. They might want copies of it.
I'll leave a few.
Sure, thank you.
Alright, so I know because the, the school committee last week was canceled, the meeting was canceled, Nadine was kind enough to contact all of you and to get a verbal approval on the trip so that I could move forward with it. And I really appreciate you doing that. That was, that was huge. So last night I had a parent meeting and it wasn't as well attended as I had expected, but I did have kids that are starting to sign up. Rumor has it that the freshmen will be at my door tomorrow around 6:00 AM because they're getting the seats, they're the second group to get the seats. So tomorrow, the French 2, 3, and 4 will lose their seats at 2:15 and then the freshmen can have a chance to be on the trip. I think there's gonna be enough seats for everyone, which will be great because I don't wanna disappoint anybody. So the trip is a four-day trip to Quebec City from Friday, March 13th to Monday, March 16th. So we would need Friday off from school and then the Monday is the half a day so that they wouldn't, they wouldn't be missing quite as much school. So the company that I'm traveling with, Student Tours Incorporated, I went on my first trip to Quebec with them probably about thirty years ago from Toronto. I didn't run the trip, Norman Ford ran the trip, but I've stayed with them because they, they're just really good at planning. They're all, they're always very well-priced and they have great tour guides, they have great bus drivers. We've stayed at beautiful hotels and if you haven't been to Quebec City, it's certainly a beautiful spot. The itinerary this time is a little different and I like it a lot better because it's, I think it's more kid-oriented. There's certainly the cultural aspect of Quebec, the historical aspect, you know, traveling around the city, traveling up the boulevard post. But they also offer the kids fun things to do that kids in Canada would do. There's an afternoon where we go to the sports complex and they can go snow shoeing or ice skating or snow rafting, whatever that is. I'm not really sure. He won't be catching me on a snow raft of any sort, but it just sounded, the kids sounded, that was what they sounded the most excited about was the snow rafting and the maple sugar in the snow, the maple syrup in the snow. So it's, it's a really good combination of, you know, the communication aspect and the historical aspect, the cultural aspect, and then just comparing, you know, what kids up there do to what kids down here do and probably the same thing. So that's just a little bit of the itinerary. I don't know if any of you had a chance to look up the hotel. It's a beautiful hotel right outside the Walt City, the Hotel Delta. We looked it up and the kids are all, "Ooh, ah, we're staying there." I mean, but not in that suite. Because they're in, they're in quads. The restaurants that we're eating at, that's what's so great about technology that we have today. It's not that big mysterious thing until you get there. You can, no, look, I can check it out ahead of time and if I think, "Yeah, that was so sketchy," it's not so bad. So that's the, the great thing about things that we do, the way we do things now. So I had a nice meeting last night with parents and answered as many questions as I could for them. We talked about behavior, we talked about ident, what they would need for documentation to get into Canada and to get back into the US, what we would do for finances, you know, a host of different things that, that we usually discuss for, for trips. So it should be fun. I haven't been for maybe nine years. So the last time we went to Quebec, we went on the band. So it was a nice trip. Since then, we've met your friends a few times, so time to stick a little closer to home.
Yeah. Great, great. Any questions? Okay, I'll call for a vote. Do I have a motion to approve the trip to Quebec?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I actually would like to call up Francine Gleason for your math MCAS results. We were able to hear the MCAS results last month and so we're having Francine do her presentation this month.
Oh my goodness.
I was sick last time. And I got sick this weekend. Such despair.
Does it hurt as bad as it sounds?
It hurts. Just trying to get a signal. So what I did today to make it easier for all of us was I actually typed up what I was gonna say. So we'll start with grade six. What I did was I made copies of reports that as the math department could look at.
Do you want me to read this report and then any other comments you wanted to say?
If you wanted to do that, that would be helpful.
Francine, do you want me to just go over sort of the highlights?
These are the highlights.
I think you wanna do that? Just for the, I think for the public, I can just go over some of the highlights. So in grade six, Francine had given several graphs. For grade six, sixty-five percent of our students scored in the proficient and advanced categories, 5% because of our small class sizes, which is basically the equivalent of two students scored in the warning category. The remaining graphs took a look at growth percentages and showed that sixty-eight percent of the sixth grade students had moderate to very high growth during their sixth grade experience. So regardless of sort of what was brought forth with them in their experience with mathematics prior to entering to Toronto and their sixth grade experience, sixty-eight percent had moderate to very high growth. And the math department believes that putting more formal co-teaching in place between the special education and regular education teachers would increase students. We've also, if you remember, when we began with the sixth grade coming up to the middle school, we also incorporated math labs and ELA labs. So we should just begin to be seeing the benefits of that assistance with those labs as well. For the seventh grade, the student achievement distribution for graph A, sixty-eight percent of students scored proficient and advanced and there were ten students, probably percent, who scored in the warning category. The graph B shows the achievement and growth of the seventh graders and the median student growth percentage was forty-two. Most schools fall within the range of twenty to sixty for growth and so our students, if you look at the typical growth, fell right in the middle. And for graph C, it shows how this particular group of seventh grade students performed on all the tests that were taken by the same cohort and it appears that students dropped in the advanced category and were pushed into, into the proficient and needs improvement categories. And while the previous graph showed that there may be a drop in MCAS scores for these particular students, the test item analysis shows that the school is at or above the state for, for standards being met. There were five questions where the students fell below the state subgroup and the math department has analyzed this data and are looking at these questions to guide instruction and curriculum training as well. And I'm involved with a PFC with Francine and some of the high school math teachers and that is, you know, one of our focus points of these meetings is the curriculum and curriculum alignment. For grade eight, fifty-four percent scored the proficient and advanced in seventeen students from last year's eighth grade class, which is nineteen, nineteen percent scored in the warning. And the state basically wants growth between twenty and twenty on the median, twenty and sixty on the median and SGP scale. This group of eighth grade students had a median SGP of thirty-three. So it shows some moderate achievement, more so on the low to moderate side for this particular Graphs D and E, this group of eighth grade students fell below state level in six standards. And again, the math department is looking at these questions and planning accordingly. Textbooks in the eighth grade are not aligned to the Common Core, even though they're approximately five or six years old. So what the teachers are doing is taking a look at, you know, the item analysis and as well as the curriculum and the Common Core and making sure that even though the textbooks are not aligned to the Common Core, that they're supplementing those textbooks with material so that we don't see these cliques in these specific questions as well. You know, and I think historically, and Ben can speak to this, the eighth grade, if you see the eighth grade test, MCAS test, is probably out of all the grades, the most difficult and challenging, especially in mathematics across the state. So that's why if you were to look even at other schools, typically what you see is that the math scores are lower than the ELA and the science scores as well. How did I do, Francine? Okay, grade ten. Graph A, ninety-three percent of our students scored in the proficient and advanced categories. The past was sixty-eight percent of our students advanced. One student, which is one percent, scored in the warning. Graph B shows the growth and achievement of a particular group of students and they are considered to be high growth and high achievement, a median SGP of sixty-five, above where the, the state likes to see growth. So the, this sort of speaks to what I was just saying. The growth distribution of this particular group of students for the last three MCAS tests shows a big drop in SGP during the eighth grade year and a huge push by the time they take the tenth grade exam. So again, I think it is attributed to not only the difficulty of the test in the eighth grade as compared to the tenth grade, but also just the added growth of students in the curriculum and basic knowledge of the Common Core through the tenth grade. And the math department believes that by allowing our students to take higher level courses earlier, students are exposed to higher level material longer. And graphs E and F, while the class did a tremendous job, there are areas that show that they were at or below the state on some items and the high school math programs not have books that are aligned to the Common Core. And again, we had discussed that and I think we'll probably be discussing it during the lectures as well. And these are the standards that the students scored low on, show the problem areas of geometry and trigonometry. Our students don't typically see trigonometry until the eleventh grade at least unless they're in one of the higher level math courses. And the curriculum has been written recently to reflect the changes in the standards since 2011, using a textbook design to reflect the changes because of the Common Core. The hope is that we're able to purchase these textbooks. A geometry book is over fifteen years old and the Algebra II books are over ten years So that is, it speaks to why we're looking in the budget for purchasing textbooks that are aligned to the Common Core. So our breakdown of moderate, the last page, moderate to high growth by class, ninety-three percent of our seventh graders had moderate to high growth, sixty-eight percent of our eighth graders, seventy-nine of our seventh graders, and eighty-nine percent of our sixth graders. Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
So what happens between the junior high years, so middle school and tenth grade, that we see such an improvement?
Finally, I already spoke to them, but the math department believes that that eighth grade test is really a very difficult test as compared to the seventh and tenth grade exams. Also, students in this group are allowed to take high level math courses at a very young age. I have four students that are freshmen taking precalculus honors this year. The rest of my precalculus honors students are mostly tenth graders. That's typically a course that students don't take until their juniors are seen as the most outstanding. So the eighth graders are seeing high level material and so they're not actually, if they're in a higher level math class, they're not working on the standards that are being tested on that eighth grade test. So it's hard to step back, if you even think about yourself, it's hard to step back in math if you moved forward and actually think about the standards that, you know, they haven't been working on, they haven't had practice with because they're practicing stuff at a higher level. So that's, that's one of the things that the math department believes, that's why they have such a big push in the tenth grade test because you can look over time at all of the tenth graders in the building. And I didn't provide that map, but I kept, I could. And if you look over time, typically in the tenth grade, the students do fare very well. And I think it's because they are exposed to that higher level math for a longer period of time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Francine. I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
So next, we'd like to have Joe Michael back and then we're going to Sandra.
Okay. All right.
Joe, are you ready back there if we call you up next? Michael Beck?
Yeah? Ready for you, Buck?
We'll take you next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I think we all know we're gonna approve of a ban refinancing for the amount of four million dollars. This requires a vote of each group, I don't know, has everyone gotten a copy of?
They should've gotten a copy of everything, all the paperwork.
I can read this, would it take a while or ask someone to boot this? Do you have a copy of it?
Did you get a copy of it in your packet?
I don't.
You didn't?
I didn't have a copy.
Okay, so then let's pass that.
Do you mind reading it or passing it out?
Do you have copies to pass out?
It was in the previous, it wasn't the previous one.
Those all need to go back to first.
The one that was canceled.
So these all need to be returned, those all need to be signed.
Who's our regional secretary?
Larry.
Larry, that's what I thought. So Larry.
She has to read that.
So after your vote, Larry will need to sign all five copies?
I've had the boot tags annotated, the chair also, sign a few. While you're reading, do you have to answer any questions? This was provided to us by our legal counsel.
Do I just give an overview of the highlight of this, Joe, of what you're actually asking them to vote?
This process about continuing financing of Toronto High School building room. This is the first chance I've had to work with Julie and we created a tour list, got a pretty good credit rating for the district, it was a very high investment grade with a resulting twenty-nine basis points of our money per year. It's a four million dollar effect to roll over the ban. Hopefully, we'll be able to permanently bond this financing within the next twelve months. The ban comes due on Thursday.
So do you need any motion to, to have the school committee approve the, any want me to express this?
Sorry?
So what do we, like essentially, like vote to authorize me to sign this? Is that what you're looking for or?
You need to vote to approve, to roll this over and then you'll need to sign it as the district secretary and we need to send it to the bank. Right, so you're actually voting to approve the entire language?
Yeah, so the, yeah, the school committee is voting all, all of this. Voted, further voted, further voted, further voted, so.
This is the motion.
And then if all voted and the secretary certifies.
The whole thing's your motion.
You voted that.
Okay.
So if I move to, to, to approve the, should have the entire document as presented, that's okay?
That's correct. That's all you have to say.
All right. So moved.
Second. I just had a question. When you said next year, this could become permanent, does that mean that after next year, we won't have to keep voting this?
Correct. Right, it'll be a long-term bond.
Okay, locked in a certain interest rate and all that?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions?
This is, we're still up in the air because we don't have the, like the numbers on the final project as the project hasn't been closed.
It's part of it and the MSBA still is withholding some funding as well as the 5% holdback that they have reworked, resected, brought up to the final project.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, now. Let's just make sure he doesn't have anything else.
Do you need one more?
One more?
I think there are more opposite.
Yeah, there should be one.
You should have four copies.
You should have four copies.
Four, okay, you got four.
Okay.
The, the.
Just ask with you.
Chair needs.
I'll share with you this evening.
Joe, do you have anything else to share with us this evening?
No, he's gonna be tomorrow, has to be the actual chair.
Oh, the actual chair.
Yes, I talked to Bon Call's counsel this afternoon. He asked tomorrow, so I'm taking it back and then he's coming in.
Oh, okay. So we'll just have the secretary to sign it?
Yep, Larry just needs to sign.
So.
Stand in here, not do.
Put one stand in, you don't worry about.
How long does it need to have to be?
Joe, do you have anything else to share?
Thank you for waiting, Sandra. I'd like to call you up.
I'm gonna report off the PTO, we have a couple of things going on. We're actually moving our meeting Monday, the fifteenth. We're gonna move to 6:00 PM, just so that people know, so that we're not interfering with the STEM meeting. So we're gonna move up to six so that people can attend both. What we have coming up are our elections. All positions will be open. Our nomination forms will probably go out after the first of the year because I know everybody gets busy with the holidays and we didn't wanna send anything home that people would kind of put aside and forget about. So people will see that come home, either email or depending on, we have something going on in the school to send it home with. We will send home a nomination form and we withhold elections in, either January or February. We still are selling wreaths. We have, I don't know, a half a dozen or so left if anybody's interested in them. You can send an email to PTO. Like it umbrella sale has been great and we just reordered more so that people want them. We have more to hand. We have more than that. And we'll probably be selling them during the basketball games while we're here. We will have them for sale as well as the 25 dollar ones. They've been a big hit. Hopefully when we're outside with the sports, everybody will have their umbrellas and make the rain days.
We could use it tonight.
Yeah. Oh, we have, recently just had our senior pickup breakfast, which I think all the kids enjoyed and it was something to help them kick off their year. It's a little late, but we're still at the PTO trying to get our dates and everything together and everybody ordering. So if that's all we really have right now, if you have any questions or anything else.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, then. I will say the wreaths are beautiful though because I've been watching them up front here. They're gorgeous.
There's two that are still up front that people were supposed to come pick up and I don't know if they have, just haven't had a chance to watch. We looked around there so we could see them, but they're still up there. Thank you.
Yeah, they're beautiful. So do you want to go back to the very beginning?
Yes.
Payroll warrants and consent?
Right. All right, so our payroll and payroll warrants are going around in process. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any corrections or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't believe we have any communications. Do we have any petitions in audiences related to any items on the agenda? Our student representatives not here, right? Okay. Do we have a superintendent's report?
I will be reporting the budget this evening, but prior to doing that, I want to announce that as of last evening, the North Andover Public Schools has announced that I am a finalist for their district. And so they will be coming this week to do a site visit. I will be going and joining them also for an interview Thursday evening, a public interview with the full school committee. So I'm just announcing publicly that that position is to begin July 1st. So we will, we will see where that goes, but I also want to just announce that I think Berlin-Boylston is a wonderful system. I thoroughly enjoy Berlin-Boylston. I am not actively throwing many resumes out there. North Andover came to my acknowledged, somebody came up to me and explained to me about North Andover and I think they carry a lot of the very similar qualities that Berlin-Boylston has. And I think Berlin-Boylston has a lot of positive qualities here and I do enjoy being here. But there's just something about North Andover that piqued my interest, so I did apply. I just wanted to let the school committee know.
How many finalists, Arthur?
I'm sorry?
How many finalists?
Well, Friday evening I got the phone call that there were five, but I noticed on the agenda for the interview for Thursday evening that there's only three of us. So I think maybe, I'm sorry, I was told on Friday that there were four, but I believe one might have backed out. I don't know because there's only three for the interview on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Sure you don't want to back out?
It's been tempting.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to introduce to you our new director of finance, Julie Supranaut. I'm still saying that wrong, I apologize. Sorry. Tell me how you say it.
Supernam.
Supernam. Supernam. Supernam. Everyone messes up my last name, so don't take it personally. Do you have a report you'd like to share with us?
No.
Principal's report?
Yes. Some of this news is because of the week, delay and reschedule is older news, but I would still like to go over it and update. The National Honor Society had a very successful blood drive on November 12th. Forty-two pints of blood were collected. In all of our fall sports, we had student athletes named to the mid-walk All-Star team in golf, Charlie George and Hall Ferrechia were named as All-Stars. In field hockey, Jesse Doherty, Madison Dorr, Grace Penegas, Michaela Heron and James O'Day were all voted for All-Stars. In cross-country, we had Sophia Nozick, Emily Sullivan, Caitlin St. Dennis, Emily St. Dennis, Rachel Marr, Joel Pendergast and Colton Marshall were named All-Stars. And in soccer, for soccer we had Mohammed Badadi and Jeff Sumit. In a girls' soccer, we had Casey McKenzie and Catherine Keane. So congratulations to all of our coaches and all of our athletes. We had an extremely successful fall season. All of our varsity sports qualified for district tournament, which is the first time that has occurred in several years. So congratulations to all the athletes and the coaches. We also had our National Honor Society put on a very successful food drive where we had shopping carts out and a competition. And we were able to hand out numerous food baskets to local needy families and also to make a substantial donation to the food pantry. So thank you to all the student body and the parents and the faculty and staff for supporting those in need. And upcoming events aren't so upcoming because they've already gone by, but our winter sports season got underway on Monday and with varsity team tryouts and practices and tonight in gym, we have a girls' varsity team has a scrimmage. Also last Monday, Allison Gury, the associate director for New England Association of Schools and Colleges, attended, visited Toronto, met with myself, met with our NEAS steering committee, all of our committee steering, all of our committee chairs, as well as the entire faculty. She reviewed the purpose of the accreditation process as well as what our schedule and plan for our October 30th through November 2nd, 2016 visit will look like. So we have kicked that process off and we'll be spending most of our professional development time as well as a lot of our faculty meeting time in preparation for the self-study. I'm pleased to announce that we have finished the Endicott College survey, which was a first step in NEAS gathering a lot of the data that we had needed. We got 100% participation from our faculty and staff, all of it, I believe, about 15 students in the entire school. And we got more than what was required for parent participation in our survey. So I'd like to thank the entire school community for doing that. It's going to give us, our standards committee, some very important data to begin their self-study process on. And we had our second Toronto Stag Lounge last Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00, as well as Gingerbread House competition and Stag Lounge, once again, was very successful. I'd like to thank Mr. Pierre and Mr. Galan for putting that event on, as well as the Hope Club for sponsoring the Gingerbread House competition. Holiday concerts have been scheduled. Tomorrow evening we have our middle school concert and then on Wednesday, December 17th, we have our high school concert. We'd like to invite everyone, not only from the school, but also the two communities to come and listen to some holiday music. The high school and the middle school concert bands, as well as the courses have been working very hard for a lot of holiday music played in the hallway. It is very nice, however, that the music portion is over in their own area of the building. In the old building, Mr. Milner, you weren't here, but the chorus practiced right across the hallway from the office. And it was, I think the holiday began in October. So this is, this is very nice. It will be more of a surprise of what, what songs they're singing and playing for us. And that is it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
We need to accept the audit. I think you all got a copy of that in your packet. Is this an actual vote to accept the audit?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So do I have a motion to accept the FY 13 audit?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Just a question, did we do this last year? You did?
Two years ago. I remember reading one two years ago.
They must have always written it, but this is for 13, so it's a little late.
So you always have to vote the audits when they come in. You didn't do it last year because this is the one that you would have done last year. And so you will be voting to approve two audits this year. You'll be voting FY 13 and then when the 14 is done, you'll vote to do 14 as well.
And you're coming next week to do 14, so it'll probably be in January, you'll vote 14. This is a little late for 13.
Okay. So that's a turnaround time, just a few weeks from when they do the audit, the actual presenting agenda. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, I believe we have, need to vote to approve our memorandum of agreement with.
Nope, you skipped one, the student teacher. We have a student teacher.
I'm looking at an old agenda. Okay, let's do that.
So we have a student teacher, Kevin Magnin, who is actually looking for his initial license in biology at high, in the high school. So we need to get an approval. She, he will be working with Lisa Sequera, our biology teacher. So I'm just asking for an approval for this individual. Diane has already signed off and has actually interviewed the candidate in the process.
Do I have a motion to approve the student teacher?
So moved.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oops, I just need your signature.
Okay. Now, the MOA with the Toronto Teachers Association regarding district determined measures. Do I have a motion to approve the MOA? Thank you, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Want to fill us in a little bit more on the background of this?
Sure. So the state has mandated that the teachers, as part of the evaluation, the new evaluation that's been put into place, they had to work on developing district determined measures. So the way the, the articles are actually read is that I actually can negotiate this with them and then I bring it forward to you as a final agreement in the negotiation process. We've actually already done this in, in Berlin and Boylston is at the beginning stages of their negotiations, so they said they were just going to bring it all forward as one time negotiation with the association. So basically, we went through this with AFT. Bill Whitehead was the teacher representative and myself, the three of us have been, have met on numerous occasions to get this document finalized and approved. It was ratified by the Teachers Association and so now we're asking for the school committee.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, so I'm just going to pass this around for our school committee. There's two copies. One will be kept with Cheryl and the other one will be given to the Teachers Association. We need school committee signatures on those.
Next I have nine C cuts discussion. Okay, next on the agenda is nine C cuts discussion.
Yeah, so the governor has, I'm just going to actually just read something to you that came from Dr. Stephen Hemmern, who's the executive director for the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. Mars is recommending that superintendents place an agenda item on their December school committee meeting to discuss the nine, the nine C cuts as it pertains to the law passed in 2010. As you know, the governor used nine C to cut regional transportation. The governor through A and F have used the nine C method to cut the total increase of $18,730,563 so that the FY 2015, the regional transportation amount is back to the FY 14 level of $51,521,000. The governor asked outside agencies to take 1.5% cut while he did a 27% cut to regional transportation. Why did he cut the increase completely? He could have cut half, but he chose to cut it all. The following law was passed in 2010, section 15, chapter 15 of the Acts of 2010. It specifically states, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, regional school transportation payments made by the state in any fiscal year through the General Appropriations Act shall not be lowered by a greater percentage than any reduction made to state chapter 70 payments in that fiscal year. In FY 12, there were nine C cuts to regional transportation and we pointed out to A and F this law and their response was, dear Mr. Hemmern, Secretary Gonzalez asked me to respond to your message. He certainly understands the importance of the regional school transportation program to the Commonwealth and its school districts. Unfortunately, because tax revenues are falling behind projections, we needed to make difficult choices about limiting funding for some programs. As to your legal point, we are aware of ST 2010, chapter 12, section 15. It is not clear to us what this statute means, but it seems unlikely that it limits the governor's authority under general law, chapters 29, section 9C, because section 9C clearly cannot be used to reduce chapter 70 payments. See Town of Brooklyn versus Governor 407, Mass. 377, 1990, and it continues with that. The question that we are asking is that we would like to have the school committee to actually approve, what they're asking is, we would also like your school committee to consider contributing a legal fund to Mars for the purpose of hiring a law firm to interpret the 2010 law and provide assistance in considering appropriate actions to take concerning protecting regional transportation reimbursement. The amount would be $500 to $1,000, depending on how many Mars school districts would approve. We also urge district to continue to send emails to letters to the governor, secretary of A and F and your local legislatures. And so what we're asking is that the school committee actually approve to not to exceed an amount of whatever you're comfortable doing. Five, it says 500 to 1,000, you know, if you say not to exceed $750 or whatever, to contribute towards the legal fees so that we could get this, this will save us over $40,000 in our budget. To cut 1.5% everywhere else and 27% on your regional transportation has reduced 40,000, over 40,000, about 48?
It's just short of 40,000. Like 39,800.
So it's just $200 shy of $40,000 out of my budget. So that's, that's what Dr. Hemmern is asking all regional school committees to consider the contribution. And I support that recommendation.
What line item in the budget would that come out of?
Legal fees? Is that where we would take it from?
Is there any connection between size of districts and the amount? Is it an assessment or is it a suggestion?
So I think Dr. Hemmern is actually, he didn't specify. So I think Dr. Hammond is actually, he didn't specify, but I would, I could make a suggestion to him that the, the amount of contribution, based on the school committee recommendation, is that you look upon the size of the districts and what contributions they would make, in which case you would definitely be more on the $500 range than the $1,000 range. But I definitely could make that statement to, to Dr. Hammond, that this is the way that you would want to vote. This would be your motion.
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion to approve an amount proportional to district size, or $500, depending on which is less.
Mm-hmm.
I guess clarity, I, I don't think I would go for over 500. I'm concerned that there's limited legal basis for, for this and for, for an appeal, so I think it's uphill battle at best. Right? The governor's already reviewed this with his legal staff, and they feel that they're in, they have the right to do this.
I'm more comfortable with the set amount.
Not to go over, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Great. Could you just read the motion again, Christine?
Motion to approve an amount to district size or $500, whichever is less.
I'd want to specifically say not to exceed $500.
Mm-hmm, not to exceed $500.
And it was proportionate to district.
So it's a friendly amendment then to the motion? Yeah.
Do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions?
Can we do the second for a friendly amendment?
Yes.
The second is again.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, hearing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I think we're ready for the budget presentation.
So, I did state this earlier, for those of you who heard this from the Berlin budget, but a lot of the beginning stages is exactly the same, but it's actually wonderful to be able to do a presentation with all of you tonight, and knowing that I do this with Julie, and Julie was a wonderful, a wonderful resource in doing this presentation, and that we actually can, you'll present this together, so you can just hear my voice, you'll hear Julie and I both presenting this, and it's been a great partnership since she has begun. So, I think we're all commenting in the office today how relaxing it was to be coming to a budget presentation, and how different one year can make.
Maybe, I don't know what...
And you know what, I'm sorry, the teachers moved that light that's up here.
Ah.
So, Paul just noticed that this evening, and he's going to have to talk to the teachers, that they shouldn't be moving any of this equipment unless they've got approval from Paul.
Okay.
So that only to be readjusted and changed for future presentations. So, the agenda, basically, I'm just going to go through what the agenda of the presentation will be. I'm going to begin with the process and the definition of the primary budget. Talk about the school committee's goals and mission, some of your enrollment history, your revolving funds, what we're seeing in your, in your state funding, as well as some budget comparisons through the last few years. We'll talk about some of the changes and the needs that we have in the budget, and Diane discussed a little bit of some of that previously, but you'll hear more about that. Also, the fact that we are only in December, and there's a lot of unknowns that we still have, and we don't really, we won't have answers to some of those. In some cases, not till January, some cases not till March, and back in 2011 and '12, we very well things in as far as May. So, we're, we have a lot of unknowns here that we have not been able to get some final numbers for. It's a little bit early in the season. However, this is the highest budget that we can present to the towns, and we can never go higher from this point. We can only go lower, so we do the best educational estimate of the budget at this point in time, given the information that we have at this time. So, we will talk about some of our, our future planning of educations, and then we'll end with some questions. But I think it's also very important to just keep that in mind, that this is the highest possible budget. Like, when we latched here at this time, our preliminary budgets were much higher than what we're presenting at this point. So, I think we have a very true estimate of our numbers. So what is a school budget? It is actually more of your financial roadmap. You look at your educational priorities, where you need to place some of your funding and your resources, and then you build your budget from there. You don't put something in the budget because it was there before. You put it in there about why, what's the plan, and what you hold on to do with that money. So the process actually has already occurred in that Diane has met with her department heads. They talked about some of their planning and process, some of the things that they need for their school system for next year within their own department. We have also met as an administrative team, Paul, Karen, Carol, Diane, Julie, and myself. We have all met to go over all of the line items and talk about future planning. We've also used our technology plans, our data plans, professional development plans, and literacy plans. All of those plans that we developed, we've also used those in consideration as we develop this budget for next year. And then it's also been very resourceful in looking at what some of the courses look like, where we have some needs for some of our programming for next year as well. School committee statement, I think it's important to talk about the mission statement, because this is the foundation of why we do what we do. And their focus is to support and challenge all students to achieve personal and academic excellence in a student-centered environment. They have four areas of their goal on student achievement, which we heard about with math and, previously, multiple four. We heard about science and technology. We heard about marketing for the adults, community engagement, the culture, as well as resources. I'm going to be talking about some of those resources that we need to talk about. A little bit of your enrollment history. You can see that our numbers are really, especially if you look at the 10th grade and see the patterns, the projections of 10th grade, we've had 56, then we had last year 71, this year we have 85. You can see in 9th grade, we had 70, 84, 85. So this yellow of 84 is this year's 10th grade 85. You can see last year's grade unit of 92, and this grade of 85. Now that is a difference of seven, but if you, if you actually look at, well, I don't have it anymore, but this, this year it used to be up in the 80s, and then it would be in middle school, and then it would do a significant drop. So, we're seeing quite a different change in the school, in the population, in that our students are actually staying with us. And why you see a drop here from 8th grade to 9th grade is oftentimes, some like go to private schools, some go to vocational school, and, but we're seeing that more and more, we're keeping our students in our own school system. If you look at your enrollment, again, you don't really want to look at 13. These were our trends before, but starting here, these are our trends having the 6th grade added into our class, into our building. But if you just look at, we had 536, and then we had 552, but yet we went from 108 students in school choice down to 93 students. So, this shows you that our population is going up, but the outside students that are coming in school choice is going down, which means you're having more and more students that are staying in your own school than are residents of Boylston and Berlin.
It's good that you're giving more students in, but the problem with not taking so much school choice is that you're not getting enough money for school choice, so that's going to impact budgets. This year, we were able to use $710,000 of school choice money. Next year, we're only spending $650,000. Because this year, projected right now, this could still change in December when the state issues their final numbers, right now we're anticipating getting about $609,000 revenue. Next year, we're anticipating only about $534,000. So, as that drops, we're going to have less money to use from school choice, which is going to be more money used in the general fund. And along with school choice, we have other revolving funds that are also going to impact the general fund budget. As I said, the school choice circuit breaker, we use whatever we get in the prior year, and it looks back from the prior year to decide what they're going to give us. So, FY 14, we entered the quarter with 470, so we're going to get about 370 this year. Now we need to use the 447 from the prior year. Next year, we're only anticipating 370, like this year, we're going to be only use 370, so we can make up the difference. Overall, sources of the general fund are going down about $184,000 for next year, so that's all money that you have to make up in the general fund, because that revenue is no longer there. This is just looking at the comparison of the different functions of the budget and show what increases are. You see the biggest increase is in instruction, and you have some smaller increases in other areas. Just kind of describe what, how we're summarizing it, using the D E F E function codes. The administration includes all the school committee costs, superintendent, business office, administration technology, legal services. Instructional services includes all the curriculum, all the special ed services, the teachers, the parents, professional development, classroom supplies, guidance, and psychologists. Other student activities includes the nursing, food services, transportation, student activities, and athletics. The operation and maintenance is everything to the building, the facilities, salaries, utilities, maintenance of buildings, grounds. Fixed charges include all of our leases, insurance, and retirements assessments, and the tuition's include speed, choice, and charter. Looking at what caused all of the changes, in administration, we actually did a decrease of $4,000, $4,821, so 41.3% decrease. That is due to actually the audit we had tonight. Because we, this year we'll have to pay for FY 13 and FY 14 audit, and this is going to be, next year we'll only be paying for the year that we should be paying for. The instructional increase is $460,694, or 12.7% increase. This is due to adding two additional features, which maybe we can talk about a little more after. We're using less school choice money of $60,000, new textbooks for math and science, which we'll talk about further. Contractual salary increases, $205,000, and then replacement of computer hardware of $27,000. The other school services, we're actually seeing a decrease of $8,428 for negative 1.3%, due to a decrease in bedroom rotation.
Some of the instructional impacts that we wanted to talk about is in, since 2012, if you were to just take grades 9 through 12 only, and you looked at the student population, you had 246 students, and we currently have 298 students. So there's a larger population of high school students in the program. And so, we also anticipate an additional 20 students in 2016 to what we currently have this year, because of our students staying in our schools. So these new additional teachers that we're recommending to support the science and the humanities program, because without these positions, the programs that we currently have, we would have to look at eliminating some of the electives, and that means that our study halls will increase. And so, we don't want to have to eliminate our current programming. If anything, we want to be able to maintain and enhance the programs that we actually have, and we want to make sure that we have the optimal class sizes throughout all of the courses. We've been talking a lot too about enhancing our STEM and our global studies, and so this will allow us to continue to have further electives for our students, so that they can have more options of their programs, but also the current courses that we do have are starting to get, they will get overcrowded. Do you want to add anything you want to that, or Diane?
You know, we have a, a current graduating class around, I believe it's about 58 students. And, you know, our, when we're moving our 8th grade up to 9th grade, you know, we're looking at class sizes in the 80s, even closer to 90 with, with some of them. So, you know, you're looking at an increase over the past, you know, last year, and then in our subsequent years of, you know, approximately 20 students per grade, more than we have had historically.
What is, what is the optimal class size?
The recommendation, it would be never in the high school to have more than 90 students. We, I can't tell you the last time we had a graduating class of 90. I don't think, I don't even know since I've been here, 25 years, if we've had that many students.
I guess to this thing is, additional teachers would contribute to maintaining the optimal class size?
Right, because our classes are in the 80s right now. Our high school classes are in like mid to high 80s, where they used to have a classes of 15 and 60, in some cases. In one case, I think you had a 70 class a couple of years ago.
Right, so the, but is that getting to the student-teacher ratio, the student-teacher ratio? So what is that today, and what is the optimum? I'm trying to figure out what it, what is it.
I believe on our school profile, I want to say it is 18 to 1, but we are seeing, you know, for instance, in our social studies humanities courses, we have class sizes of anywhere between 27 and 32 students in a classroom. And that is just not conducive to, I think, the education that we are most giving our students.
We're also, Ben, just shared with me today, Ben, do you want to share that information?
Yes, the, the new state requirements, I actually went to the website again this evening. State schools such as UMass, Worcester State, state colleges and universities, starting this next year will require four years of math to get in, as, as now it's only three years of math. The following year requires three lab sciences, whereas now it requires two. So, we're running up against our limits as far as personnel, and that's, that'll be coming next. This, this, this next coming year, we're going to have five seats for an increasing number of students in math in the 12th grade. Right now, they're limited to like the AP courses and so forth, but every student's going to need to take it, which means we have to create new courses of math and staff them with teachers that we have on hand now. That's not our, our neatest department, social studies with a two-man department is, you know, compared to a four, four-man math department, social studies clearly lends out as well as science. Those are the two departments that are most hurting at this point.
So the two teachers resolve that issue?
Right now, John Dooch in handling 9th grade has all 90 students in three classes because he also has to man the US history classes as well, and he's only carrying two sections of those. Those 90 students would be, would be 50 student-sized classes next year, because we have X number of teacher, we still have to cover US history 2 for the, for the 11th graders, and that's the Pacheco. And then we have an AP course that we teach as well. So, you're looking at robbing AP courses, whether it be in math, or social studies, or English down the line, and we don't start thinking about this, and frankly, we can't afford to wait another year on social studies and humanities, because John Dooch will have 90 students in two classes next year, unless we drop an AP class or something of this nature.
And what students are going to do?
But does, does this resolve those issues?
Yes.
Or does, and does it resolve it for what foreseeable future, based on the enrollment numbers and history that we have?
The immediate problem is, is the social studies and science, the... The immediate problem is, is these social studies and science, the following year, we're probably looking at another request for a dual-certified person to kind of help us out in math and English.
So you're saying then maybe another two next year?
I don't know if it would be two. Would like to see how it works out, what the numbers are. We're adding over the next two or three years in the high school, about another 80 kids. That's maybe four sections of kids overall that are multiplied by seven grades a day, that's 28 sections. There's nobody to teach those kids, that's like five or six teachers. If we were to just do it, you know, the way we've been doing it, we can do better than that. We don't need that many. Right now, we need the two just to survive next year because frankly, we can't.
The two would give us an additional 10 sections.
And also, we currently have six teachers right now that are teaching one course a day beyond their contractual requirements. So we have six teachers right now as it is, and they're teaching six courses, and they're supposed to be teaching five a day. And it's making that very difficult for those teachers to be able to collaborate with their colleagues as it is right now, so we need to be, you can't keep asking teachers to do that, it's outside of the contractual agreement. Yes, Lori?
This may come off as a very stupid question, or one.
Question's stupid, so don't.
I probably should know this, but it, so with the addition of 30 students or whatever it is in terms of the difference in enrollment, we get more revenue for them, too, don't we? Through the state, so it's not that we're just incurring additional expense.
Right.
We're also.
You're getting more revenue.
Getting more revenue for each of those students.
Find out when the Chapter 70 numbers come out, how much that is.
Also, in our math textbooks, you heard from Diane and Francine already, that some of our textbooks are over 20 years old, and they do not reflect our new Common Core standards. And so, we are starting to see that decline in our MCAS scores in math. And so, we are trying to, Diane's been working with a PLC, the math PLC group, and trying to look at the curriculum and the needs that needs to happen. And I actually sat in a portion of one of those one day, and we're talking about the books and what needs to happen with our textbooks and that in the beginning. So we do not have that in our budget currently, and so what we do have in the budget currently for our textbook materials are either replacements, or placing binders, or bottom repairs, or now that we have, you know, we've had 60 kids, now we have 80, well, now we need to buy 20 books for some of the numbers that are in the line items already, are being accounted for that way, not for purchasing all new books and curriculum. Also, we have, we have to align the new science standards, it's called the next generation science. So each grade level will be teaching portions of earth life and physical science, and they also will be integrating this into the technology program and framework as well. So it considers spiral curriculum, and it's very different than what we are currently doing. And this is the way that the new next generation science is requiring us to instruct in the middle of high school level. So these textbooks that we currently have are not compatible with the new standards or the requirements. Also, in technology, we have, I don't know, Paula, if you want to elaborate on this a little bit more, but we have a grant, and in order to receive the grant, we match the resources. We're looking at additional iCads and laptops. We're looking at replacement bulbs for our projectors. All of these projectors, we need to have replacement bulbs for them, and the more we're using them, the more that they are, they are going to start burning out, and so we need to replace those as well. We also have one laptop cart that is functioning, and so we brought one in from the old school, and it is not, it's not really usable at this point in time, and it's outdated, and it doesn't match the requirements to our standards. And so, we had started with the wireless in most of the rooms, but we need to be able to get the wireless in each room relevant at the other room that it's currently standing. What did I, Paula, anything else you need to add to that?
Yeah, I guess the only point of clarification on that first one, that's part of that, you know, like $53 million bond bill, which, again, I kind of hinted at when we met, I guess, maybe two months ago, that we're not going to see a lot of that in terms of, so they have released $5 million of it. We did apply. It is going to be a matching grant, so because of what we're deemed as, it's very similar to the E-Rate program as far as our percentages go. So, again, we're not considered a poor community, so it's basically a 60-40 split. The grant will pay for 40%, and we will pay for 60%. So part of that will be, again, hopefully, we'll get the grant based, Mitchell Chester did say at our meeting the other day that they hope to release in early December, obviously, we're already there, but we did receive the grant. But regardless, you know, we need to start working on doing some of that replacement. Hopefully, the grant funds will help do that, but either way, we need to start moving forward.
Thank you, Paula.
We had other increases, operation maintenance, we increased $26,962, or 4.9%. Biggest item in here is to get a new contract for maintenance of roof units. It's a new building, and some of the maintenance wasn't needed in the first few years, and now we're going to need to start adding in maintenance that's needed to. Just the roof units, the gym floors need a refinishing for $3,200. Part of the technology is the network hardware that we just talked about for $5,635. And then contractual salary increases for employees of $3,601. Fixed cost increases are estimated at $109,122, or 9.3%. At this point, we have no health insurance increase. This is our best estimate for an increase plus the insurance that we needed for the two employees. The retirement assessment to Worcester Regional, we're anticipating an increase of $7,682, that's an 8% increase, which is what we've seen in the past few years. And then other insurances, property workers' comp, we said about $12,383. Just to give you an idea, like workers' comp this year went up by 33%, we're only budgeting 27%, so that's what we consider around there. And then tuitions, we saw on the transportation side, it went down, but unfortunately, because we have replacement that's changed to residential placement, so the increase is $169,980, 14.3%. We're just looking at the budget comparison, see if this year's budget was by almost $150,000 from last year. And then, there are some things that make up all of it. The revolving fund, we have $140,000 of it. Contractual increases, the salary makes us $210,000. The additional teachers, $120,000. All the charts of other benefits, $110,000, and then additional specialty costs, replacement, $165,000, so that makes up all of the $5,000 of the budget. So this budget has an overall, from the general fund, 9.9% increase. If you look at it without, looking at all of our spending, including the revolving funds, the increase is actually only 6.5% because how much the budget's increased overall, but because of lack of funds, the general fund is going up 9.9%.
So I think this slide is really important because it's important to see the difference. Last year, you've had, the first year, having sixth grade added, and we did get a little bit of a jump, and then this year, you know, it's starting to go, to move back there.
So, just to add, some of the things that currently are unknown, are planning, Chapter 70A, that we'll find out in January. School choice numbers, we'll get new numbers in December, and then again, on the share sheet in January. What our circuit breaker will be, what the percentage will be for that, as well as our insurance increases, that we'll probably find out in January, February, and we have to go for a new bus contract, so that will be going out shortly.
So at this time, I would like to open it up for questions from the school committee, I'm sorry, Lori, I'll ask you first, but also if anybody in the audience has any questions, you might want to open it up to them as well. Lori, what was your question?
Just a comment about one of the things that we learned a little bit about at the conference, is planning for future retiring benefit costs, and the wisdom in sort of expending, putting some money aside for that, so that over time, you actually reduce your overall expense. Any thoughts on that, Julie, any experience with that? I know it's very difficult because it's, it's making an increase in a budget even worse in terms of.
I think theory is really nice, I haven't yet seen any districts that can afford to do it. Everything I've seen, like, I think one district in the state is actually doing, is not a lot because the initial increase to the budget is even more, and people are not able to do it, so it would be nice.
I think, Lori, you probably would have, honestly, more opportunity to look at that once you can start looking at some of your EMD, and all of that is really coming up. And so I think that's something that you could probably reconsider or start to think about planning, but you have to put that, I believe, we went to the same training on that, and I believe that you have to be able to put that in a line item budget, so people see that it's actually your budgeting for it, which is smart planning. It's just a way of thinking about how you can do that, and I think if you had EMD in the future to be able to reduce some of that cost, it might be able to work later on.
I think the impression we got is that some districts are doing it, but very modestly, you know, they're really just putting a tiny bit in.
I think putting out a lot, having a bad job, want to do it, not many of the plans that they have.
The other thing that we attended the same session on were cost savings ideas and efficiencies. And one of the things I was really intrigued by was discussion about bus contracts and building in financial penalties for performance issues. I realize it's a relationship as well as a vendor contract, but I thought it was an interesting concept to at least consider, so that even if you're, you know, you hope your costs are going to be moderate, but you also want your performance to be excellent.
I will say that with first students, a couple of this year, but last year, we had some questions and concerns, and ever since then, I meet with the owners of our student every, about every six weeks. We actually meet and we talk about their concerns, other issues, as they follow up what's going on. So that's been a huge help, I think. I don't just work with the manager that's in this unit, but actually the owner. And so we get to meet occasionally, to consider every so, every six weeks or so, and I have the elementary principals meet with me, because that's where the biggest concerns were concerned from. I have them meet every, when I need them to. But that's a good point, and I'm wondering, Lori, do you have any paperwork on that particular one? I think maybe we could give it to Julie as we're doing the bin process.
I think I emailed you both with the superintendents who were part of that workshop where we got that information.
Okay.
I can resend it to you.
Yeah, we'd be great, because I would put him away.
Did we get handouts?
We didn't get any handouts, I just, I just sent them the presenters. There was two different towns, and I'm not sure which town did that contract. And in my mind, I was actually thinking it might be the same bus company, if they're throughout the state even, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so at this point in time, we will be asking for the school committee to approve a budget for $8,313,056.
Do I have a motion to approve the budget for $8,313,056?
This is a preliminary budget.
Preliminary budget, thank you.
Just a highlight, because we all expect it's going to go down. I will make that motion.
One second. Okay. Decession?
I think I have to put my two cents out there.
Of course you do.
Yes, I do. But I think the starting point for this is much too high. I'm concerned that we haven't really taken a step back in reducing last year's budget as a launching pad to a 9.9% increase, instead of taking a budget of, say, a level service budget, what is the bare minimum, and then talking about what are the increases or what are the opportunities for savings? We're just piling on top, especially in a year where we have to make some tough decisions. I think we got us, I think, knowing going into this, and we say preliminary 9.9, we all know that a 9.9% budget will not pass. It's going to incite and cause challenges. I know with the town of Berlin, so I don't even know why we're starting. We're starting with a problem, instead of starting with a more tempered, plausible approach.
We're just out of curiosity, and I know I'm disagreeing with what you're saying. Based on a lot of these added costs that we're looking at, are things that either are contracted, things that are happening that we have no real control over? You know, I kind of wonder how, how different a place we would really end up, because we really haven't been adding a lot of extra into these budgets over the years I've been doing this, and we've always been asking to try to maintain level, level, you know, the service is basically not level. To make a level funded type of budget, you're going to have to take away something for everything you've.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm even suggesting a level, start with a level funded, start with a level serviced, right? There was one-time costs or expenditures in last year's budget. We've already started with that baked in, instead of pulling those out and then building a budget on top of it. I'm saying start with a level serviced and then go.
Perhaps we can talk a little about some of those one-time costs, which I sort of can recall what you're talking about, so I know.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have the numbers in front of us, but I think that's where I would like to start, see that, right?
Right.
Instead of it just being, start with last year's and pile on top.
I will just have to say that last year's budget, we actually had a decrease in our general fund's budget last year, and we didn't, I do not recall off the top of my head any for Tahontli, maybe for Berlin, maybe for Boylston, but I do not recall for Tahontli, where we had a one-time cost, because a lot of the things last year in Tahontli, we were able to still pull into our building project and into our building funds. So we even had, you know, like our, all of the units up in our roof units and so forth. We didn't put any of that stuff even into the budget last year, so this year, we've had to add things into the budget because we didn't have to put it in last year because we were still able to use our building. So I don't know where those are, I'd love to hear where you think some of our one-time costs were from last year, because I don't recall doing that in our Tahontli budget last year.
Right, I think we should start with a level serviced, I didn't see that, I just saw last year's budget, and then start adding stuff to it. Because I think we could all sit here and know, 9.9% is not going to pass.
We know that, and we all know that, we don't disagree with that. However, at this point in time, given the funds or the understanding of what we know for our funding, this is the best we can do at this point. I could turn around and say to the school committee, let's do a 6% budget, but I'm giving you fake numbers that don't even mean anything, and then I have to tell you we need to cut everywhere to get to that 6%. This is what I'm telling what we need as a system at this point in time today, financially, this is the best we can do educationally and as much of an educated estimate and a guess that we can possibly do at this point in time.
One of the things that I think would help, and I don't really know that we have this choice, every year, we have to start with a number, and so early, to the point where we don't know what we're actually going to get in terms of like Chapter 70, and with circuit breaker and other things, we have. breaker and other things. We have to have a number out there so early that we're just estimating. And it always seems to start out crazy high, all of us knowing there's no way that we're, we're even going to as a more proof, an increase like that even later on. We know we're not going to. But just based on what we know, when it isn't even two thousand fifteen yet, and we're, we're asked to run something. So I agree, it's, it's kind of silly that we, that we're obligated to go down a path like this. But I also agree with what they, is saying. We don't want to put a number in that's just, we just pull it out of the air and then find that, uh-oh, we're in trouble later on because those are, numbers aren't matching up with what we're actually going to get. And I would think that the towns at this stage, because we've been doing this this way for years and years and years, yeah, everyone hears with that, the starting number and they're, everyone ends up getting nervous. But every year, we work it down just to a negotiated number that everyone can live with. Just we'll have to do this here.
And it's interesting, this morning, I was at the FAC meeting in Berlin. And we had, the town treasurer was there, one of the FNC members were there, a lot of people were there. And they were asking about budgets and so forth, and we were at half. And I told them we were going to be going for tonight's budget and what numbers were. And I think there was an actually a positive response with, wow, what a difference a year makes. And doesn't that sound so, so much different than what we had heard last year? And so it was actually a, people were like, wow, that's, that's a good change. So I got a positive response when I was in Berlin this morning at that FAC meeting. And, you know, spoken also in Boylston, with Marty Nefmera, as well as with Michael May. Last week, we were actually looking at facilities and we were walking with them. And, you know, they were asking about the budget to where we're at. And so, well, you know, it always starts off high, but this is where we're at, latest in the world, you know what? Sometimes it just, it is what it is at this point in the year. It's just all that we know at this point in time. So they understand, like you said, it's what they've seen for years and years and years. It's what they, they know is going to happen.
I think too, it's really, for me, the more important number is the overall increase. I know the towns are assessed via the general fund and need to pay for that. But for me, a better marker is how are we really going up? And, you know, again, I think the towns, people realizing, they become more familiar with it, they know that because this budget is presented before the end of this year, it, it has to be a safe budget. It's, I feel much more comfortable with something safe. And it's interesting that I get, I get, I'm going to withhold that comment. But.
The only, my only concern, not my only concern, but a concern for me is that if this is the sort of pie in the sky budget, there are a lot of things in here that it really sounds like either we have to do, such as the tuition for the residential placement, or things we, we will be, you know, hurt if we don't do, such as the addition of the two teachers.
Right. So, but what, what happens, Lori, is this contribution here that we're doing, we don't know if that's all we have, we are able to do at this point in time, which can help offset some of those. We don't, we won't know that until the end of January. And so for example, let me just go back here, for example. So this is your school choice numbers, okay? And in FY fifteen, this is what we're using this year. And this is what we're saying we're taking in. And this is what we're saying next year. We don't know, this is why we dropped down to six fifty here, because we don't know, this number, if that stays here, we might be able to do more. However, this, we'll know more in December. That could change as low as this. In which case, we can't do any more than that. We don't know that until after the first of the year. So there are some different things throughout here that we can be looking at that can help offset if we need to. The other piece is, you know, we put in an estimate of the, of the transportation, because we don't know yet what that's going to be. But in January, we'll know. And, you know, we put a safe number. So if that goes lower, that can help offset some of those other additional costs.
Yeah, I did wonder what the assumptions were on the transportation side.
I think you did eight percent. That's what we had, you know, kind of throwing it out there right now. But we don't know what that, what the bids will come in at. We're hoping that it's more than that.
How long does a bus contract usually last?
Three years.
Three years.
This year's was five, last time? So we're hoping that's an eight percent, but you know, it hasn't gone on five years. I don't know what that increase would be. You know, we also had a thirty-three percent increase on the insurance. This last year, we only put into the budget twenty-seven because we're thinking, there's no way it'll go up thirty-three percent again. But, you know, so we're, we're trying to be conservative with this and trying to get lower. But yet we're also trying to be really smart with our, our estimates and our increases.
What was the assumption on the regional transportation reimbursement?
That doesn't actually play in-
That doesn't play into our, that would play into the assessment.
Okay.
Not in the, so.
Okay.
Why do we even try that?
And chapter seventy as well, same?
Right.
Okay.
We have an increase in our enrollment, so our chapter seventy could go up.
It should go up.
But we don't. Well, it should. We would hope it does. But we don't know what's going to happen. So what we did was to play it safe. We did it at the level at this point in time, because we don't know. We don't want to assume it's just going to go up.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Call for a vote then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Julie. Okay. School committee comments, future agenda items.
Top future agenda item?
Yes.
I would like to put a topic on next ones to talk about the announcement that Nadine made earlier about her seeking L Square. I think we need to start the process of putting together a job profile and also talk about the impacts that that would have on our current plans and strategies.
Okay. We are, I also wanted to say that in January, we talked at the Berlin meeting about our second meeting of the month, having a workshop to talk about, had a discussion about the regionalization feasibility study and what sort of other next steps we could do. I see this as part of that too. I mean, do you prefer this to be on the first school committee or do you prefer it to be part of a work, a workshop meeting?
I think we need to do this sooner than later. Honestly, I wish we could start this month.
You're right.
We gotta, we gotta get the ball rolling on this. So as soon as possible, so I, I think they should be two separate months.
Okay. All right. So the January region-
What is our first one in January? Is the seventh?
January seventh, okay.
I'm sorry. Can we repeat that?
A discussion about our superintendent?
Yep, I have that. The visualization discussion.
That will, that will be on the workshop. Yeah, not for the meeting.
We were talking earlier about without, it looks like the grant's on hold that we applied for. And what else, what else can we be doing to move this forward? So if it is trying to get funding for a study through our, our town meetings in May, or if there's other things that were in the summer study that we get, that we could be taking advantage of now, after.
Agenda items, future agenda items, if you'd like to see. School committee comment? I do not believe we have a need for executive session. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.